Now we want to come to the to the Financial Commission and ask for the establishment of two subcommittees. And I wanted to run through some of the items that that we discussed at the council retreat. It was it was very formal at the council retreat. I'm hoping here. If we have questions or comments like just interject and and ask, and it can be more of a conversation or a dialogue. And then at the end, we want to set out the parameters of the two subcommittees that we're going to ask for for assistance in framing and the strategy around the the council direction that we received. So with that, we'll start to move through. I've given this presentation. This will be my my third time now. In this first part, we we always get the most feedback on we for anyone who used to read The Economist, they used to have a section, a section called by the numbers, they would give a number. And then they would give context to that number afterwards. And for whatever reason, it really sticks in people's brains that way. So they they remember the numbers. So here's how we're going to run through our budget presentation, then we'll have another one for our personnel. So 3.98 million, as the Financial Commission knows, that's the funds to date that we've received from CARES Act and ARPA funds. That aligns nicely with our next number. And again, as the Financial Commission's picked up on right away, red is going to be bad and black is going to be positive. A four million when we were going through the act for this year were one time mistakes that we discovered and had to correct that were reflected in the act for the the Financial Commission recommended to counsel for acceptance and counsel accepted it. And as you can see in the notes, it was a reclassification of a settlement agreement and the correction of unrealized gains. 1.17 million was property tax revenue in excess of budget. So this is good news. When we talk about what is the primary revenue source of our city? It's property tax and the indicators we have now are not only that we've exceeded the revenue collection in our our budgeted project budget amount, but also in the projected amount. So as I'm sure you know, HDL puts out a consensus forecast, which includes property tax projections and we've now exceeded that. 18.7%. We have a longstanding policy to not let our general fund reserve dip below 20%. At midyear last year, we were at 21.4%. Now we're at 18.7%. I I have not been shy about saying that my my preference would actually be higher to have a fund about unreserved fund balance higher than 20%, but our policy has been 20%. So to be below that is quite alarming, especially in context of our next big red number was the 6.6 million. Our unassigned reserve at the beginning of the act for period was 7.8 million. And as we sit here today, it's down to 1.2 million. And there's a number of reasons for why this dropped. And and John can go through some of those, but we've got lawsuits and legal expenses, which were a big portion of both of these numbers. Another, I should have broken this up. I should have had a positive one on this, but two million negative again, and we're going to talk about this more in depth later. But this was our CIP shortfall to begin the fiscal year. So anyone who watched the city council moving through to adopt the budget, they spent a lot of time talking about what capital projects do we delay defer? Can't we do now? Can we have to do later? And what they didn't know at the time is they were actually starting with a bank account of negative 2 million. When we went through and processed everything from the act for and looked at where we started the year, we were 2 million shorter than than we realized. All right, some positive numbers. Sales tax collection has now exceeded pre pandemic levels. When we made this slide, it was over budget, which again, it was a very conservative budget estimate, but it was 13.4% over what we've budgeted. Our last quarter is the first time it's been back to pre pandemic levels. 11.4 million Financial Commission had a great hand in this. This was the reduction in liability, including the $5 million prepayment to Kelpers increased our unfunded status, the funded status dramatically. And 4 million is what we can expect to get from our second ARPA payment in just a couple of months here. So while it's very unfortunate that we find ourselves in a position that we had to rely on these two payments, it does give us the second $4 million payment will give us the ability to get our budget situation straightened out. And as we move forward, we can be in a much stronger financial position. You know, we say a lot of times when you go into crisis, it it both shows what you know about the organization and exposes what you don't know. And unfortunately for us, we became exposed on our our financial operations. So future budgets, they're gonna, they haven't adequate or past budgets haven't adequately planned for employees, infrastructure or assets. And those are the things we're going to talk about today. And it feels a little bit like this is how we've been budgeting to balance our budget. So you just take the tip away, you're actually back at zero, which is fantastic. Our benefit, this is a combination of all of our benefits funds. And this is actually in addition to over expending our financial reserves. This is actually how we balance the budget this year. So what we call government magic, you see that we started the fiscal year fund balance at 2.3 million of our benefits. We plan to expend 3.7 million for a $1.6 million deficit. So while on paper, our general fund is balanced in practice, it's balanced because we're taking 1.6 million dollars out of our benefits fund. And as long as we have employees who still need vision dental and healthcare, this is not something that that we can replicate. We can't do it again. Combine this with the fact that we're in the unique position of a city where we fund and execute our own workers' compensation policy. The reason that we had a fund balance so high was if we get a large claim, if if an officer gets hurt on duty, for example, or something catastrophic happens, we have to pay for that. So it's not good to both administer your own workers' compensation fund and also not have sufficient reserves should something happen. Equipment replacement fund, this is more budget magic, but we've done it in two ways where our current fund balance is 400,000. We budgeted 1.3 million dollars in expenditures. So at the end of this fiscal year, we're going to have spent $900,000 more than we have.
Excuse me, could we go back to the last slide for just a moment? Um, frequently what insurance companies will do is they'll buy a very high end policy, a reinsurance at some level where we cap off the loss. Has that been looked at?
So it's one of the things that I've directed our risk manager to look at. So we're going to look at funding both our general liability and our workers' compensation through insurance. Alternatively, if you don't want to go through insurance, you typically hire a third party administrator. The reason for that is workers' compensation, as you can imagine, is is very complex law to administer. And over the past three or four years, we failed to administer appropriately. And and it's that failure has cost the city a very large amount of money. I won't even try and ballpark it. But yes, to answer your question, we're going to look at how we administer and whether whether or not we're self insured or part of a pool.
Well, it it's a little more than just being self insured. What I was thinking of is that maybe we take a policy where it has a $1 million deductible. And that we're insured below one, we are self insured below 1 million and we go out to a pool beyond that.
Yeah. So you actually, your SIR, you can pick different retention rates, you can say it's up to a million, you can say it's 250,000. You typically want to look at what your claim rates are and adjust accordingly. So that's what we would be doing, but you buy the insurance through a pool. So I think you and I are saying the the same thing.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Gable, right? This is news to me, unfortunately. Which risks are we, is the city fully self insured for without reinsurance?
So we're self insuring our workers' compensation plans right now.
Okay, but any of the other risks, because you mentioned general liability.
So general liability, we're part of a, we have an insurance group with that.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess a question on you had said failure to administer the workers' comp accurately over the last couple of years. That felt like it was a throwaway comment, but is that what what's the exposure there?
So I don't have the the total exposure. And I didn't intend as a throwaway comment. It's I tend to have a very upbeat personality. And that sometimes lessens the impact of what I'm seeing, but we we had employees that were on workers' comp. We're not moving through the interactive process. We're remaining to be paid full time while they're away from work full time. And we also weren't back filling the positions. So we kind of got the worst of both worlds. Where we weren't having an employee either return to work through a doctor's care or separating through disability. And also because their position was on the books for two, three, four years, we also weren't back filling that causing stress in the organization.
Thank you.
Sorry, let you go then, Gabe. How many employees does the city have?
Oh, that's a good question. Do you know, John, maybe 130 full time, I think? Is that right? I wasn't anticipating.
Okay, I'm just looking for ballpark. That that comports with my expectation strikes me. I'm just kind of shocked with this. It strikes me as a very small number of lives, if you will, to take the undiversified risk and just own it. So it sounds like that's what you think too. So why don't we keep going?
Yeah, and I think I think it's fine to, I I legitimately think either way is fine. You either you can self insure, you can go through a pool. But if you're going to self insure, then you have to have a fund balance that can withstand a potential catastrophic event.
Okay, fair enough.
All right. So equipment replacement fund, we're going to do a little bit on this in a few slides. But as I said, we start with our current fund balance, our obligations are threefold, what our fund balance is. And the important takeaway on this slide is this doesn't fund the vast majority of our needs. So I'm going to show one or two slides that that June, and I think she's on the call, our our finance manager put together and show where we're at on equipment replacement. So it's not only are we not budgeting appropriately, but well falling further behind, we're also not budgeting for our actual needs. There's no reason to look, look at all the the very fun numbers on this slide. The only thing that's really important is down here on the right hand side, the percent budgeted is 15.4%. So when we talk about where we're at in capital costs, capital budgeting, capital expenditures, and we look at every one of our park play stations being beyond their useful life without adequate ADA surface installation. And then we look at what we've budgeted for replacement. These are, these are the kind of items we're talking about when we want to try and move forward as a competent function. City, part of that includes for budgeting for your needs and not letting your equipment get beyond its useful life. So this is the funding shortfall that June put together. So without without going in, she did an excellent presentation and I will not do justice to it. The primary takeaway that she had when she analyzed our fleet system is not just that we're going to expend all of our fund balance reserve and go negative to a million dollars. But it's not addressing this $3 million shortfall that we have of equipment that needs to be replaced by 63023. Right? So we're 900,000 in the hole. We don't have a funding mechanism. And our starting spot, if we actually wanted to fund fleet appropriately and equipment would be negative 3 million. So some of the things she put on the conclusion was the two of the three generators are over 30 years old. And we actually don't have an emergency generator that has been purchased this century. So if we talk about if you live in an area that's prone to things like earthquake or wildfire, you want to have an emergency generator. So you have the ability to operate should an event happen. And right now, our equipment is not just beyond functional life, useful life, right? We're talking about 50% longer than it should be in operation. And it goes through right down the line where sewer vac truck is in service repair more than it's in service to the city. And it just goes on and on. Her her presentation was enlightening and and very scary at the same time.
So I just ask, Gabe, I mean, is this that the staff did not feel compelled to ask the city manager these questions before? Are you just, I mean, it can't be that suddenly the switch went on and people said, hey, the shoe park equipment is old. It's been old for, you know, a decade, you know, so. What what changed? What happened as to why this is now an issue and it wasn't a year ago or two years ago? Can you just elaborate a little bit in terms of just not necessarily the finance part, but the fact that you're asking the right questions? I'm really happy for that. But like, you know, like, I mean, the the generators, I hope they somebody turns them on to check that they work, you know, I mean, I'm not I mean, yes, they're old, but I hope so. Nobody's saying, well, no one, no one gave me the money. So I didn't buy one and our generators don't work at all.
So you, when you look at, I I'd be speculating on on what happened previously. So if you look at things like the sewer vac truck, when we say the reason it's in service more than in in repair is that more than it's in service to the city is because we are turning it on, checking it, and we're having to repair it. We operate the generators weekly, once a week, we'll test them all. But testing a generator for five minutes once a week is different than trying to get it to run for three days consecutively to power your operations. So even though we can test, we can put ourselves in the best position to succeed. When you talk about trying to get through an emergency with a piece of equipment that's 30 years old, that was designed to be put out of service 10 years ago. Even even if you make it through that that event, you weren't putting yourself in a in a position where your equipment is safe and reliable. So I I don't, I I would be speculating on on what happened previously. And I I don't want to do that because I wasn't here. I don't know what the other other pressures were in the city. One of the things that we looked at when we started six months ago is we wanted to do an audit, not just of our financial system and our budgeting practices, but also of our operations of our personnel. And we wanted to see if there are areas where we were potentially exposed, areas where we're doing, you know, fantastic, of which there's many areas. They won't be covered here today. But it's, I I couldn't guess at the questions that were asked previously. But you're right, the playground equipment didn't get old yesterday, right? It's been old. It's been old for some time. So and and part of the answer to this is going to lie in the next set of numbers that we see. The organization of Los Altos is not a healthy organization. When we talk through, I pulled up quotes from exit interviews that took place recently. And the answer to the question, as you can see, is I'm burned out, right? I'm not engaged. I'm actually beyond burned out. I'm disengaged. There's no stability turnover. Right? And the question was, what's your primary reason for leaving? We look at the personnel in the organization, we say 51%. They've been in Los Altos less than five years. So if you think about that, when you have turnover rate of more than 20% annually, the year before the pandemic, it was 28%. The year before that, it was 26%. I think the last calendar year is 24%. If you're turning over the entirety of your organization every four or five years, you're not going to have someone who has a continuity or the history in the workforce to understand and see your way through some projects. This was one of the the scariest one ones for me because I know how overloaded HR is right now. So this, at the time, we had this presentation. This was the percent of full time positions currently advertised, not vacant. We had a backlog that we couldn't get to. 14% of our organization was advertised. I think at this time, we were at something like 18 or 20% vacancy in the organization. This was from a really great employee who left shortly after I started. We spend a lot of time talking about if you want to have an organization that's functioning, you give them a mission. You give them the tools to do the job and you pay them appropriately. And if you're not going to do one and two, then you have to do three. But you have to do one and two, if you're gonna, if if you're gonna avoid three. Right? Is there anything you would change about your job? This person just wanted tools, tools to do the things they were asked to do. This is one of my favorite ones. John Furtado is your second longest full time employee in finance. When council hired me, they said, Gabe, we're, we've saved the finance director position for you. And you're going to get to hire your own person. And I was like, fantastic. Thank you. And then I got here and it was a finance director, a finance manager, two accountants and an AP person. So it was true that the director was the rest of the department also. And so at the time, this number two was very important to us as well. We had a a high level management position out. We received two applications for it. This is the market telling us that we're not being competitive, that we're we're a hard place to work. We just had a top level management position out. We received a total of 10 applications and one of them was was a hygienist. And there's nothing wrong with being a hygienist, but how how are you moving from from a hygienist to a director position in government? Right? This, this is the market telling us that we're not taking care of our organization. And it's it's underscored here, right? If there's the least satisfying thing about your job is that you're always the only one here, you're overworked. And there's never anyone around to share the burden with. So that's that's part of the reason we got to where we're at. I'm going to go through infrastructure real quick. So we don't need to pay attention to the pyramid. We don't need to pay pay attention to the the schematic here, but the idea is that the worst type of maintenance you can do is reactive maintenance run to failure. The best type of maintenance you can do is predictive. Los Altos is is in reactive and it's not a surprise to anyone. And one of the reasons we got there, this is quote by David Allen that I love, you can do anything, but not everything. And it talks about prioritizing. And this is one of the things we're going to ask the subcommittee, the Financial Commission to do. We're going to have more needs than we have resources. But we want to help ask you to help us prioritize them and bring them back to council. So when we talk about the general fund and how we prioritize things, there were two things that stood out to me when I reviewed our capital program. One, we've already talked about, it's the negative 2 million dollars in year, you should never be in your budget year and moving forward on capital projects that you can't fund. So that was a little bit alarming. The second one is your projected obligations over five years. For us, that's a $22 million shortfall. That in and of itself is not a big deal. It's it's normal to have projects that you want to work on, that you're you're getting funding for, you're figuring it out, you're putting grants together, that's fine. But what was alarming to me when I looked at that number is it didn't have any of our needs in it in that $22 million deficit. So council spent a lot of time talking about Halsey House. And that wasn't in in the capital plan. But I like to remind the city council, that's only one of the two abandoned structures that we have in Redwood Grove, right? We haven't talked about the caretaker house, which is also abandoned and is also falling apart. We have a police station where our IT servers are in pallets and a third of our force works out of a trailer in in the back parking lot. But yet we didn't have our police facility planned for in our capital plan. We didn't have MSC, our Grant Park Senior Center doesn't have hot water. And it's electrical means you can't plug in like two fans without blowing the electrical at the same time. But we haven't been planning for this stuff. So we asked council, when you think of that quote, to think of it this way, right? You can do anything, but not everything. So let's focus and really prioritize where we go. So that was a long way of saying we need two subcommittees, we need your help. The first subcommittee is the one that I'm most excited about. We need to make recommendations to council on these items and more. We need to decide what our unreserved fund balance is going to be. Are we comfortable with it at 18% or do we want to increase it? We've depleted our benefits fund, our equipment replacement fund to a point where we can't replicate that again. What what funds are we going to put into that? This commission has a very good working understanding of Kelpers and additional discretionary payments. Should we do more of that? We got direction from council to use Park and Lou funds as opposed to our general fund for things like Rosita Park certificate of participation in the community center downtown maintenance fund. So we want a subcommittee to help us figure out what do we recommend to council here? Again, we have, we have to prioritize this because we have more needs and resources. And the second one is our financial enterprise system. You have to make a recommendation to council on what we're going to do and how how we intend to purchase it. And we're hoping that that'll be a second subcommittee that can help us walk through these items, determine the best path forward and then go back to council. So that, oh, this was at the beginning. I was trying to remind council, this is not like a snap your fingers and this is better, right? This is a process. Not an event and it's going to take multiple budget cycles for us to get back to a spot where we are financially sound. So with that, I will end my screen share.
Thank you.
There we go. And Chair, I'll I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So that's great. It's good to see the the clarity and you know, you've got the message about the budget very quickly. I think it's surprising. I mean, I will, for the record, state that none of this was news for the for the this commission. I mean, we've been we've been actually quite concerned ever since when we did the re-budgeting during COVID. We specifically asked whether this budget is being balanced, which it was, even though we took down our sales tax and everything else was taken down on the back of our staff. And we were told that the 17 positions that are not filled are not needed. So it was, it was sounded like a not the right approach, but it's not our job to do the city manager's job. So we've pointed out that the CIP funds are going to be depleted. I think before we've talked about, we've asked the council to to take care of the unfunded liability and not let that languish because that's there's a big return on doing that sooner than later. The thing, the only thing that burns me out of this thing, frankly, personally is that our auditors, I feel, I mean, even if our staff was not aware of the incorrect entries that have a huge swing on our budget, the $4 million. How come our auditors didn't catch that? So in fact, I think that's a part of the conversation we're having while renewing their their contract. I really want to ask that question more seriously as to, you know, we are not looking at journal entries every day, right? So and neither is, needs anybody except the auditors. So that one really bothers me. But everything else was not news, I think.
I will address the audit real quick. When you purchase property, you can either purchase it as an investment for resale or you can purchase it as land you're going to hold and and develop as say a park or as part of a specific plan. Council purchased the property, staff told the auditor this was for sale and reinvestment. So that means it's an investment and it's not going to hit your books. Two years later, three years later, council had in fact not sold the property and and when we pulled them said, well, no, the the intention is not to sell it.
Right. So I understand, but I thought the council said, no, they never intended to. This was not the intention of the council that they were, they wanted to hold it for sale. So so either somebody has changed their mind or it's complete miscommunication here.
Yes, the second one, but I I'm saying it's not the auditor's fault. So the auditor, the auditor booked it correctly.
Auditors were told that this is for resale. So that I can completely understand. But I mean, I I never thought that that was the intention of the council ever. So I don't know how the city that staff and the finance department actually got that.
I mean, Col G, if you're looking for anybody on this commission who thought buying that property was a good idea, no matter how you book it. You'd be safe in having, and the gates saw the prior correspondence. As they say, nobody asked us. So fair enough.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. I do want to ask the rest of the commission if I think Gabe has given not just this presentation, but some other more detailed ones. And so has John about new, you know, changing our funds approach and all this kind of stuff, also in terms of how we keep track of our fund, of our allocations and expenditures to the city council in the retreat. Now, you know, we all did not participate in the retreat, but you know, my impression was that you wanted to also include that in one of the, one of the subcommittees to look into how those ISFs or chart of counts are changed, et cetera. Also, is that still the case? Or have you taken that off the off the?
So no, Chair, we, I just didn't, I didn't list everything that we need to do in that first subcommittee, but it's it's about approach, how we fund internal service funds, what what we're going to fund first. Right? And again, the the I I tried to come back to the examples that that were just the easiest. If if we decide the Financial Commission says our priority number one is we can't be below 20%, so we're going to put 20% back. Then that means that the other priorities have less funding available. So I I was just trying to highlight that was not meant to be an all inclusive list, just just kind of the the idea, the stuff we have to work on before we get back to council.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for some comments from the rest of the commissioners, please.
So maybe
So maybe I'll go, I'll ask a question, I guess. So it it sounds like what we have is a situation where we haven't had enough revenue to properly maintain stuff and do things. Are we, so that is the simple answer here? We either need to find a way to exist on less money or we need to raise property tax rates? Is that is that really the question? I think, you know, where and where are we with that?
No, Commissioner Whipple, I I actually think we don't have a revenue problem. I I think we have a prioritization problem.
Okay.
And I I think if we're able to prioritize maintenance, for example, it's always cheaper to maintain equipment than it is to allow it to run to failure and then have to replace it.
Exactly.
So had we started investing in some of this stuff as we should have, we wouldn't be looking at you know, four million or three million in parks because we would have been on a on a replacement plant. So I I think when we look forward financially, we certainly have to be disciplined. We certainly have to prioritize better. We certainly have to do a better job managing our budget, but I I don't think this is a situation where when we look into the future, we're we're kind of looking very bleak. Now, if we want to build a new police station, we'll need a new revenue source for that. So these items are separate. It's a police station that was built in the the fifties or sixties, not designed or meant to operate in, you know, the twenty twenties. And again, just just our traffic division, a third of our force operating out of a trailer lets you know where we're at. So for what we know, what we can maintain where we're at, that's more about discipline and prioritization. If we want to add things, then you're probably looking at a new revenue source.
So do you see this first commission one that's going to be active in in working on things like, do we do a general obligation bond to fund a series of projects that the city would be involved, or is that gonna be a different commission at some point?
So that that would be a a separate one. This, I, the council at March eighth is gonna talk again about a potential revenue measure for city facilities. And out of that, they made, I I don't know what road they'll take. They they may ask for different subcommittees. They may not. So I don't want to speculate on that. Th- this one is the known problems that we have now and how we wanna, how we wanna plan for those.
Okay.
Anybody else comment on the presentation or we can talk a little bit more about the about both of the subcommittees? Just generally any comment on one.
So I I would, this Gary, I would say it's a refreshing view of reality.
You don't, you don't start to fix a problem until you realize you have it.
Better identify it, yep.
I'm I'm glad that you got that just a bit very, very quickly. Thank you very much. So maybe if you don't mind, maybe we can talk about the second subcommittee first, because it seems like I think we've got a understanding of what that is and see who wants to be on that first, because that one is a little clearer, I think, in terms of what the ask is. The first one is a very broad and somewhat open-ended ask, so you know, people are conscious of their time and commitment and and some of it, I think, is probably outside the purview of the commission also. I mean, you know, asking us to prioritize where our CIP allocation should be is the city council's job, you know, I think we can say this is the amount of money we have, but for us to say do the Halsey House before something else is, you know, not our, not the commission's responsibility or or obligation. So can we talk about the second one first, please, then?
Yeah, two points, Chair. You're absolutely right on that second point, and I I didn't mean to give the impression that we're asking you to help help prioritize the CIP. Council's done that. But we're we're, the amount of money we have available to fund CIP projects is directly going to be impacted by the policy lovers that we pull before. You're you're also absolutely right about the two committees. The second one is gonna be a shorter time time commitment. This first one that we're talking about, we're probably talking about a commitment over a couple of months before we get through the end of this fiscal year is probably when that second subcommittee would wrap. So so thank you, I should have, I should have said that.
Okay, so the second subcommittee is for people who have it, who who would think they can add value to the selection process of the ERP system, financial systems, how they're laid out. You know, John, the security, the privacy issues related to it, that kind of stuff. And I think we saw a a recommendation from John on our presentation on the, on the two or three candidates for the systems. But I think what hasn't happened is really to even ask questions about what are our needs and will they be fulfilled? And if not, then what else besides a out of the box, you know? Maybe a completely out of the box solution will work, but I doubt it. Maybe this is a thing where we can now add value in terms of saying, let's look at this plus this plus this, you know, there maybe the privacy issue can be helped by something else that's not offered by one one mentor, et cetera. So people have sort of a, who can add value to that conversation, I think, with the with our director would be the second commission, second subcommittee.
I'll start out with a, I'm not qualified for the second committee. I've never install, I'm a, I'm a finance guy, not an accounting guy. I've never installed a system. So I I think it would be obvious to me that I shouldn't be on that second committee.
So are you looking for volunteers at this point? So I've been
Gary took one step back.
You go right ahead.
Volunteers for number two.
So so I've been a a public company CFO for the last, at least for the last thirty or forty years and put in things like Oracle and SAP and and others. And have used, have worked over the years with ADP, so I'm I'm doing that. I'm I'm a little bit reluctant to strict specifically volunteer for this because I'm actually more interested in the other two that we talked about a few moments ago. But I'm happy to do it. I think I'm qualified to do it, and I I think I'm would be actually very excited to work with John to to make his life better, not to make his life more difficult. So so if other people would like to do it more than I am, I'm otherwise, but I'm happy to volunteer if that's, if that's what people want.
Okay. How many people do you want on each committee, Chair?
Two for sure, but I think it can, I don't know, there's a protocol of how many people can be on a subcommittee?
Yeah.
A two on each committee.
Otherwise, it's brown act.
Right.
Okay. If nobody else wants it, I'll do the committee number two. I've done thirty years of ADP. I've implemented a software. I've even done hardware and software development for avionics packages, so. I would be happy to, but I agree with Art that number one committee sounds far more interesting.
Well, we, I was gonna suggest something is that the number one committee is such a huge obligation that maybe I think we just create a committee for a piece of it, then dissolve it and let other people take on another piece of it. So if that would work, because I think that's probably a much, I would think it'd be ambitious to see if we can do it in two or three meetings, the first subcommittee. You know, it is, it would be good to have people who have a little bit of history with that, so that's why I was thinking people like Martha or Tony who have, you know, several years to sort of say, you know, why do we want our OPA to be this way, why do we want our, you know, one general reserves, et cetera, to be certain level. So but I think it's such a huge thing that maybe we do some and then we we assign for the first one. Yeah.
I'm sure it's fine with me, Cool G, I'm happy to be volunteer. The next few months are okay with me, but my sense is by the end of Q two, I'm gonna start traveling again, but the next few months for sure are fine with me.
Maybe that works even better, that you, if you can, you and someone else wants to do the number one committee for a while and then we can switch it.
Just to talk about that committee that that would be on the budget side of it. We are planning to to go with the media in I think to the commission on March eighteenth, so I'll be reaching out to to this subcommittee to go over what we are planning, so it's gonna be more about running through what direction we got from council at the retreat and how we would like to present those changes, and then we'll also be crunching the numbers which would be which would, which we would run through the subcommittee before bringing to the, to the commission. And then that goes to council in April, and then similarly in April, we'll be bringing the twenty-three revised budget to the commission. And in May, we'll be taking it for adoption to council. So we're looking more in terms of the short-term structure of how we get through these pieces based on the council direction. What kind of revenue corrections we need to do based on my analysis that I would be running through and then the the funding structure that we, the internal service funds, how we create those, you know, so we'll go more deep with the, with the committee and then come to the full commission.
Sounds like you're trying to scare people off the committee.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not. But 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 what what I'm trying to say is that we are on a tight deadline.
Yeah, yeah, we got.
A lot of these done, yeah.
So I'll come back on a positive basis. I'd be glad to serve, especially the first few months here on that first committee.
Okay, is that okay with you, Martha and Mark, that these two start off, and then we can see if we want to rotate?
Thank you, Gary and Tony for taking that on.
I'm good with that.
We could be fired at any time, I think is the idea.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got a Commissioners Whipple and Clarice, number two, and Commissioners Richmond and Kalbuck at number one, is that correct?
Correct.
I think we need a a motion on that. I I think the discussion is fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Gabe, so move on.
So I I'd like to just ask a question. Gabe, did you send that slide deck to us?
Oh, I can, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. I thought it was very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, we're up to item number three.
Three is gonna be a presentation on the community center completion by our Engineering Services Director, Jim Sanlo.
Good evening.
Hi, Jim.
I'm gonna share my screen here for my PowerPoint. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I've been having internet issues, but it seems to work faster in the evening. One second here.
How much of our staff works from home? I'd have.
Uh, no, I don't think it's that high. We we just talked today about implementing the new work from home policy and schedule and all that. We'd be happy to provide an update on that.
I was just, I was just curious.
Okay, do you see the presentation mode?
Yes.
Do you see my? Can you all hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
You see the presentation mode, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you see a big slide rather than my notes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I want. Sometimes I get that screwed up. But again, good evening, Chair Calcott and Vice Chair McCleachie and Commissioners. This presentation is an overview of the final budget for the Los Altos Community Center. And it's a follow-up to I think I've met with you once or twice, given you an update on this. And so it's a short presentation and I'm happy to field questions along the way, so just let me know if you have questions. So just doing a quick overview of the milestones, back in April of council gave the green light to actually design, construct the
Mr. Sanlo, you're freezing up. You may want to dump your your own personal video.
Beg your pardon?
You're freezing up and your your audio is not coming through well. You may want to turn off your personal video.
Got it. And I'm gonna close Outlook. If this continues to be a problem, I can move upstairs.
Now, you're sounding much better already with what you've done.
Is that better?
Yes.
But you're not on slide presentation anymore.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we still having issues?
Having audio issues. Your audio is one out of three words.
With the video, that's weird.
Jimmy, wanna, you wanna set up upstairs and and come after the next item? We could do that if we could give you time to.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead and move to the next item.
Okay.
Okay. So the next item is gonna be the quarterly investment report. Were there any comments on clarifications on that one?
Are we gonna review it a little bit here or just ask questions?
If you have any questions, because there, it's it's a pretty standard report, nothing much has changed.
Okay, I have a few questions, but I'll wait if any other commissioner has one.
Sure.
I I have a a couple of concerns which I had over the summer with the super nationals and the Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac with interest rates rising and so forth. Do our fund managers feel there's gonna be any issue with Freddie Mae and Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae? They have not fully recovered the amount of capital. They were way undercapitalized. If the Fed continues with raising interest rates to such an extent, does that put us in jeopardy with regard to either one of those? I know they're quasi-backed by the federal government, but there's no explicit back. And we get a lower interest rate from them than we'd get from treasuries. So do they have any feeling along those lines? I mean, we we kind of went through this in August. And I noticed that we still have about twenty percent in both Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae, and the super nationals trouble me to no end. Because they're not really backed by anybody. Those are my two two concerns.
Were those raised at your August meeting?
They were, she kind of partially came back and said they were raising capital on that, but they weren't. They weren't truly addressed, so that would be my comment with regard to that.
So John, I think the second one we should take on is when we, we, once a year, we actually review our investment policy.
Okay.
And that's when we tell our investment firm to decide on whether we want to reduce supernatural supernatural, national exposure or increase, et cetera. So if you can hold off on that one, I think that'd be a worthwhile conversation when we are talking about policy. This is the performance comments on on how we did, and if you need any clarification or anything, I think Freddie, Freddie Fanny question is also already valid. So maybe that's a question that John, Finance Director John, can take back and get us an answer to.
Well, we did get a kind of a partial answer in August. John's got more more important things to do. I can, I I can ask it when we have the policy.
Okay, I do have a question. I see like we have completely drained our life account. We're down to ninety five thousand. Is that intentional or or I mean, it was a decision? I mean, that's the most liquid money we have. Was there a decision made to do that? And if you can talk about that a little bit, please?
So it was a little bit more on the cash flow part of it because we wanted to pay the five million So it was a little bit more on the cash flow part of it because we wanted to pay the five million to Calpers as well as the one point five for the OPE. And we also had a lot of cash flow flowing out with the completion of the community center. But then it's always timing and then we get our property tax. So now we have a balance. We've started building the balance back. And we intend to put between five to seven million in the next couple of weeks into late.
Okay, cuz that, I feel that's important. I mean, that's the
Absolutely.
We need to be able to write a check for that much on an emergency basis. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions about performance or this presentation?
Not really. Fifty points, fifty basis points is always pretty terrible, but maybe it'll be better in a year. I don't know. Okay.
And if the committee, you know, the committee approved the new investment policy in their last meeting in January. So it won't be due till next January unless you intend to want to review it and so.
That's, that's a fair question. Let's address that. I mean, is the, is the economic environment changing enough that with an inflection point that, that we as a commission should review the investment policy?
I think by this summer we should. The Fed, the Fed's gonna come out with some pretty interesting things over the next several months and we probably should review it maybe in the July timeframe.
Tony?
Look, I, I think we have, my personal view, we've got more important stuff to do. We hired somebody to manage the money. I got no reason to believe they're not managing it as you would a short-term portfolio like this within the realm of what they're supposed to do. You're gonna get a little more yield out of it. I assume when I look at this, they're staying short. So, Cool J, I won't stand in the way of it. I just think we spent some time with them. I think they're competent managers. Even to do their job. And I think we got more smoldering problems to allocate limited time to. That's just where I'm at on it. And this all is what a short-term portfolio looks like, what these guys invest in. If we have a geopolitical meltdown, maybe we run to something else. But other than that, just riding the curve back up, I think that's their job.
I, I would agree. I think we hired them for that. They're competent, we think. So let's go on to other things.
So just, John, Commissioner John, I, I think that's fair that maybe in June, we should ask if the PFM feels constrained by our policy in any way that they should, they should proactively seek a change in the, in their, our, our policy as opposed to us going and reviewing every line of it. So I think if we could do that, that give them the permission to ask us if they want to make a change to accommodate, to, for our interest, I think that might be sufficient at this time.
I'm in total agreement. We have bigger fish to fry. And the risks on either one of those are small.
Okay. So John, if you can just raise that with them, you know, that, hey, you know, if you think that our, our policy is constraining you in any way by, by summer, things are changing too fast, then let us know. Otherwise, we, we trust them.
I can do that.
Okay. All right.
So we could go to Jim if he's ready before we take on the next item. Jim, are you good to go now?
Yes, I, I'm back. Is my audio better now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I, I think it's time to invest in, uh, and change out my internet extender. This has happened several times the past week, so I'm just Windows is not responding. One second, is your next item a long one, John?
No.
Okay, actually, I'm good. I'm here. Okay. It finally opened. Share screen. Let's see, I've got some notes that I the first time I've done this on a single screen. So does anyone know how to show my notes page on a single screen?
Windows.
I know, right? One second here.
You ought to go out of presentation mode, I guess.
Yeah, maybe I'll do that. All right.
Yeah, don't worry about it. Making it look pretty. Let's get to that.
All right. Well, here we go. So, yeah, again, thank you for having me. This presentation is an overview of the final budget status for the community center. And this follows on a April presentation I gave last year. And I'm happy to field any questions along the way. So this kind of depicts some of the milestones over the course of the project in terms of dates. Back in April two thousand seventeen, the council approved the creation of the new community center CIP and gave staff a green light to start design and putting together a bid package. And then July thirty-first of nineteen, they awarded the construction contract to Gonsalves and Strunk, our construction contractor. They broke ground September third of nineteen and then we had a longer project than anticipated, about an additional seven months because of COVID and then resulting supply chain issues that happened as a result of COVID. So instead of a substantial completion date of November twenty-fifth of twenty twenty, it ended up being in July of twenty we, as you all know, had our ribbon cutting October eighth of twenty twenty-one. And then the council approved the notice of completion for the contractor October twenty-sixth. So looking at the overall budget, we were approved between soft cost, construction cost and furnishings fixtures and equipment, we were approved for a three, thirty-eight point three million dollar budget. And this kind of gives you a sense. We had thirty-seven million contracts in place. This one sixty, I'll explain that in a minute, with the remaining budget of one million when the project was complete. This is a more detailed version of, of that breakdown. So can you see my cursor? Okay, we've got soft. Thank you. Overall soft costs, which was largely the architect for design and support during construction, as well as our construction manager and other inspection and environmental costs along the way. So we had a five point five million dollar budget in that. Given some of the delays with COVID that, that tacked on extra amendments to the, the consulting team supporting construction. So in the end, we spent just over five point seven million with a, we, we came in over budget in that category of about two hundred and thirty-two thousand. For construction, the approved budget with contingency with ten percent contingency was thirty-one million. And by the end of the project, we had a, a savings of that budget of six hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then for furnishings, fixtures and equipment, one point seven million dollar budget. And long, short of it is, well, okay, this is where it gets a little, I have to explain. We had about nine hundred and fifty thousand in contracts in place for kind of the, the primary furnishings and equipment at the end of construction. When we presented the notice of completion to the city council, at that time, we had estimated about a hundred and sixty thousand in what we call day two expenses. So after construction, it's almost like you buy a, a brand-new house that was just constructed, but once you move in, you realize there are another, a number of other things you need in terms of equipment and additional furnishings. And, you know, as you move in, you realize, oh, there's things that we, we need to change here and there to, to make this all work. And I'll, I have another slide that explains that a little more. But, so at that time, we had estimated a hundred and sixty and John, this is where that, that hundred and sixty was. I didn't realize that we had had this right here. That's kind of a conversation between John and I. But in the end, as of the council date where they approved notice of completion, we had a million and fifty-five thousand dollar savings. But that included an estimated amount of a hundred and sixty in day two costs. The actual savings or, or coming in under budget through construction was this one point two one five million dollar figure.
John, this is Gary called back. Can I ask a question as we go here?
Please do.
Okay, so your day two, hundred and sixty thousand dollars. There's been discussion. I know no approvals yet, but discussion of converting this the community center into the EOC. Is that in any numbers yet or is it my way ahead of?
No, yeah, yeah, that's actually way ahead of this. I mean, yeah, we actually have a proposal for that design, but it's a draft proposal. But yeah, it, it won't be funded out of any day two costs. That would come out of the EOC budget, kind of keep our apples with apples.
So is that, is that EOC budget, something you can, you can share in gross numbers with us to tack on here?
I don't have it quite yet. I mean, I've got the draft, but I've got some questions of the architect. So I'm not ready to, to share those numbers.
Okay, I'll push it one step further. Back of the envelope, is this a hundred thousand or a, or a million dollar difference?
The design?
To implement the, the full thing.
We, we don't have that cost. That, that's part of what we're hiring the architect for is to put together concepts and then cost it out and then finalize design.
Do you have, okay.
Asking is, can you give kind of a ballpark?
Yeah, back of the envelope, and then you tear up the envelope, but at least so we know.
I, I don't have a, a, a ballpark for construction. I have a ballpark for the design, which is somewhere between, you know, one fifty to two hundred.
Okay.
But yeah, that's just the design and, and, you know, putting together plans, specs and estimates.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so plans to actual build is probably a ten X, so it's probably
It's about a second, yeah, a million and a half.
Yeah.
General idea.
Okay, that's good question, Gary.
Okay, so back to the past. So talking about day two expenses, so day two, they covered things like additional furnishings that were realized once open. There were a number of IT and security equipment that needed to be installed. Signage, supplies and miscellaneous electric and carpentry work and site work. So at this point, we're, we're nearly fully contracted for all of our day two expenses. So we're right around a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So the kind of the more up-to-date kind of budget is right here, where we have the approved budget of thirty-eight point three million. This one point two million is the, the amount we came under that through construction. The total day two expenditures as of now is about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So we are currently just north of a million dollars under the original thirty-eight million.
Right.
Did somebody have a question?
I, I don't know. I have a question or a, or a comment. Actually, this may be some, totally semantics, but you know, I think it's kind of important that we talk about these things. I was under the impression that our actual budget that we approved was thirty-five million with a ten percent contingency allowance. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's fine. We're staying within our contingency. We're not within our budget, which is important just to be able to sort of, you know, how we talk about these things, not, not, it doesn't change anything. And I think you did a stellar job in staying within contingency. But I think it's, it's important to sort of recognize that, that we are in our contingency as opposed to in our budget.
Well, that is true. I, it's all semantics, as you say. The, the council approved, but let's take the, the big ticket item, which is, you know, the construction contract. They approved a, I've got some of the numbers here, a twenty-eight million dollar contract with a ten percent contingency, you know, which they gave the city manager authorization to make decisions about costs that would come up during the construction period. So in, in essence, the council approved a thirty-one million dollar contract with the idea that, you know, we're only gonna spend this two point eight million for necessary unforeseen things and things that come up during construction that we realize are, are necessary.
Well, I, this is our whipple. I think we have the same, I have the same issue that Cool J does, and that is that if we said our budget is twenty-eight and we spent you know, two million dollars more than, or thirty, thirty-five, and we spent two million dollars more. Great that we spent less than our contingency, but I think the point is that for the people of Los Altos, we told them it was gonna cost thirty-five and it actually cost thirty-eight. Right?
Which is fine. I mean, but I mean, yes, the contract was twenty-eight, but the actual budget, Jim, was for thirty-five with a three, a ten percent contingency on top. So, so it's just, it's semantics, but you know, it's important when we're, when we're talking about these things. And, and I actually, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very happy personally, and the commission is too, that you've been able to deliver this thing and thirty-two or thirty-eight. But I think it's important for us to sort, sort of talk about this in the, in the, with the right language.
Well, yeah, I'm, it, it's interesting because every one of our public works, construction projects has a fifteen percent contingency built in. And it's never broken out in a discussion. This is the first time it's ever been broken out. In this project, we had a ten percent contingency. And so for whatever reason, this is the first time it's, it's come up that way.
I mean, take it for what, what, what you may, but I'm just saying that you're talking to some numbers geeks and we, we are sort of think of ourselves as the fiduciaries for the city. And, you know, I think for us, the, the language is kind of important in terms of how we talk about it, but, and, you know, so that's, that's just my feedback.
Not, not belabor it, but I'd go one step further. I think the perception of first knowing what the numbers are and second conveying them what would appear to be honestly. You, you, you don't want to have two sets of numbers going around and people saying, well, what do, do they know what they're doing? And are they trying to pull something over us? Frankly isn't, and frankly, I think you've done a great job in coming in under that total maximum spend. But you, you don't get credit for that when it looks like you hiding something, which it could. So I would, I would think through saying it is absolutely on budget plus contingency. So just throw it all out there. Don't say, well, what about the contingency? Well, now you start really mouthing something. And that's not good. So you, much better is, I mind as, as the perception that you know, and you're honest with the public. So for us, I think it, I think we understand that, but there's a number of people that come to council meeting. Will this challenge you'll sound. So we want you to sound good and feel successful. Just talk about it in the right way.
Yeah, I appreciate it. This is the first time in my thirty years that I've had to talk about Yeah, I appreciate it. Um, this is the first time in my thirty years that I've had to talk about it that way. But it, I'm, you know, I'm, I, I appreciate the feedback, uh, you know, because there's not a public works project out there that, that doesn't have a contingency for unforeseen.
Well, I think we all, we all know that, but you, you, you should get the credit for what you're doing, but just be appear to be, I mean, you are honest, but be forthright.
Okay, thank you.
We're on your side.
Thanks. Yeah, and, and you know, and we, every month, um, I provided a, a, a update to council, you know, kind of explaining what orders were. So I, I, I feel like we've been transparent along the way about what, what came up.
Just don't get whacked by the semantics.
Yeah.
Okay, that was very helpful. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
No, happy.
All right, thanks.
And it's beautiful, by the way.
Yeah.
It is spectacular.
Gorgeous. Nice job.
They did an awesome job, for sure.
Thank you, Jim. So moving on to item number five, so that's regarding the extension for the city auditor. And I kind of explained the reason why within the report, I don't know if there are any questions on.
I, I think you explained it well. I, I, having been through a lot of audit committees over forty years. I, I, I agree that you want to turn your auditors over, around. But since our staff turned over completely, I want somebody that knows where the books are and where the numbers should be and where the debits and credits are. And if it isn't anybody there, I mean, John, you're the, you're the, the longest term guy here. And so I, I, I would be supportive of a one year extension. And let's go out and start all over again when you're comfortable and we get through one more audit.
I would concur.
Same here.
I will second.
Okay. So, so do you need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion for that one if the.
Okay.
Are we recommending to the city council?
Uh, yes. So, so then let's do a motion. I would agree.
Yeah, yeah, I would move that we accept your recommendation to add a one year extension to amazing company.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Second, a commissioner, Clarice, so I'll take the role, Chair Cocke.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Classey?
Yes.
Commissioners Clarice?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Call back?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Whipple?
Yes.
That passes unanimously as well. Moving to the next item, so we have the commission, the commission meeting set on April eighteen. Uh, I'm making a request to move that meeting to April twenty fifth or May second if possible. And the reasoning being, uh, on March twenty first, the finance commission is going to see the media budget. Uh, and what adjustments we are doing based on council direction at the retreat. And then on April twelfth, uh, we take that media budget to the city council. And between April twelfth and April eighteen, uh, on April eighteen, the intent was to bring the FY twenty three first look to the, to the commission. But we just have a week between going with the media and then bringing the FY twenty three to the commission. So we need a little more time there so we can get the reports done and.
Individual feedback from each of us on just the calendar, is that okay?
Sorry?
You're looking for back from us on whether we are available on the twentieth.
Correct. So, so it would, it would help, uh, because if council gave us some direction on April twelfth, technically, that direction would also affect the next year. So we just want to make sure that uh, we have all the ducks in the row and we're not scrambling with poor information to the commission. So.
So do you need a motion or you just want to go around the room?
I want to go around the room. April twenty fifth would be great. May, May second would work. It, it depends on whether the commission is available. It could be a weekday as well, uh, sometime in that week of April twenty fifth.
I'm, I'm free on the twenty fifth and May second. So if you want to go around the room, that's, there's one for you.
I'm free.
April twenty fifth for me.
I'm good on either day.
I'm good on either day.
I'm good.
Okay, so April twenty fifth is fine.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
You'll send out a notice?
Uh, yes, so I, I will cancel the April eighteenth meeting and then the April twenty fifth will be a special meeting. So it will just give us a little more time to get, uh, get everything.
Fine.
Okay, and that should conclude everything. I just had one more with regards to the, to the agenda, to the minutes of the prior meeting. And just to make sure that I'm capturing the correct correction that's required, I'm going to share my screen on this one. So here's what, uh, what we had on, on the agenda regarding the memorandum of internal controls. So the action item was that the commission expressed the concerns on the system risks received. So what else did the commission want to be updated here?
Well, we needed a cyber, remember the auditors cited we did not have a cybersecurity policy. And we need to get a cybersecurity policy and also make sure it gets implemented.
Okay, so we'll expand on the system risk management policy. Okay.
I guess you can say including cybersecurity, system risk management policy, including cybersecurity.
I think that's good.
That was the only correction, correct?
Uh, well, there was also the, uh, that came up with the auditors about closing the books on time and how we're going to, when are we going to have that fixed? I realize you're shorthanded and you're just inheriting it, but we need to, we need to make sure all the little loose ends are done.
Correct. And, uh, in order to answer that, we need to do a complete overview of, of what, what's at hand. Because, uh, one thing is being short-staffed and the, it's another thing, having the right tools. We, we are practically handicapped with a lot of that we do with the, with the systems as, as well as with all the errors that are coming up. And depending also on the direction we get on the budget, it would depend how much of resources we can commit.
So I, I would suggest rather than going into all of that, the minutes reflect that we discussed in the past. And and, and discussed corrective actions, something really small.
Okay, we can do that.
Well. How does that sound, John?
To differ a little in the sense that
Okay.
if you do have something you want to accomplish, we need to make it as an action item in review that is being accomplished in some future. So it doesn't just get forgotten. And that's the main reason I like this to be something reoccurring. Because I appreciate that John is short-staffed. I appreciate the high turnover. I appreciate the systems are bad. But we don't really want any of these things to fall through the cracks. Just like with the cyber plan, we don't want that to fall through the cracks. We want to make sure there's a plan and that it's implemented and that we review it and we don't just go off to something else. And that, that's really what I'm after is an action items and a plans where we can say, hey, we're working toward this or we can't complete this because of this item, but at least we're thinking about it. And that's the logic behind what I'm saying.
So could I, could I suggest, so on, on our council agenda or, or commission agenda, we have these potential future agenda items. Uh, we could add what, what you desire here, so it is not lost.
I, I think, I think, you know, I started making it as an agenda and right now, I think what, uh, Commissioner Clarice is asking for, and I think it may be worthwhile, is that if you can just acknowledge that, uh, you are going to develop a plan, you know, at your pace and, uh, you know, we obviously, you know, your resources well enough. And, uh, and, um, you know, I mean, that you, you want to work on a security plan and, uh, closing the systems are, you know, or, or doing quarterly closes, et cetera, on time. And, uh, just, you know, if you can acknowledge that you're going to work on that plan, uh, that will be sufficient now at this time. Because we, it's your, it's, you know, it's your department, you know, we're just saying that, hey, those things are important. Uh, and you should be paying attention to them and, uh, you know, but if your program comes back and saying, I need five million dollars for, I can do that, then, you know, that's what it comes back to.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Was there anything else, any other order of business for the commission? Future agenda items?
I would just for the future agenda, I think, I think we should bring back the work plan. I think it'll, it'll be good for us to sort of review the work plan quickly once.
Okay, noted.
Okay, so, um, so John, uh, Director John, you were going to call the subcommittees. And you're on both subcommittee's, I assume, is that what that means?
Correct. I, I will, uh, we will probably do the, the sub, this, the first subcommittee on the budget first. We, we'll look at, I have to talk to Gabe on his availability and we'll reach out to see some potential dates, uh, which would probably be next week, I would think. Because we have to move a little more explicitly on that because don't have too much time. We, we have to come back to the commission in eighteen days, which means we post in fifteen.
Okay, super. So, we done then?
Yep.
I believe we're done.
Okay, an hour and a half, not bad. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Goji.
Take care.
Thank you.